I want to call to order the Amberly Village Council, please call the role.
Rich Barlock.
Here.
Hank Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alida Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Madley Wolf.
Here.
Scott Larmour.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Lieutenant Bloom.
Here.
Rick Kay.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, reflective, and just for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting. These were circulated to all council members in the package in advance. Are there any comments on those minutes? Seeing none, we can consider the minutes approved. The next item on our agenda is the finance report for June of 2018.
Including your council packet was a summary memo, summary of the UAN report that we've received for the month of June and that the Finance Committee has reviewed. The earnings tax collections for the month of June totaled $249,000. This is about 3.1 percent below June 2017's collection of $257,000. So far year-to-date, we have collected $1450,000. Our estimate for the year is $2750,000. So we're about a 56 percent collection rate as of the end of June. The local government fund netted $5,600 for the village this past month. Our total revenue for the month of June was $330,000. So our total revenue collected as of the end of June is $2.7 million. On the expense side, the village experienced expenses last month of $436,000. And our total expenditures through the end of June, $2.2 million. So we have spent about 43 percent of the budget for 2018, which is $5.1 million. And that leaves our unencumbered general fund balance at $5.7 million. And also included an additional item in the council packet as it relates to JEDs revenue from the village. You recall that in 2012, a council entered into an arrangement with the Sycamore Township for a JED in the unincorporated area of Sycamore Township. Revenue started flowing in in 2013 and continued through 2018. And year-to-date, this particular mechanism that you engaged has generated $3.7 million for Sycamore Township. And for Amberly Village, it's generated $419,000. So it has become a very good source of revenue for the village. So another way to supplement our income. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. And first, the Streets Public Utilities and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Streets Public Utilities and Sewer Committee met last Friday, just a couple days ago. And during this meeting, we reviewed the 2018, reviewed a bid for the 2018 Stormwater Program. The program includes repairing several locations in the village. I'll go through them in, I'll try and go through them briefly. It includes repair of a retaining wall and erosion prevention by 2589, 2601 Willowbrook Drive. Repair of a catch basin, installation of stormwater piping by 7,000 Willowbrook Drive. This will help prevent flooding by the mailbox area, hopefully, presumably. The replacement of a stormpipe with a larger one at 6696 Fair Oaks Drive. Replacement of a stormpipe at 7707 Creekwood Lane. The reconstruction of a manhole, installation of a stormpipe at 6536 King Cade. An installation of bollards at 3560 Section Road. And reconstruction of a catch basin, installation of a stormpipe by 7034, 7027 Beach Hollow Drive. The engineer's estimate from CT Consultants is about $253,000 for the work. Big proposals for the stormwater program were solicited, and the big proposals were opened on August 2nd last week. Four bids were submitted, with Smith Construction submitting the lowest at about $249,000. So about a $4,000 below the engineer's estimates. The next bid was about $6,000, $10,000 higher. Smith Construction's provided good and professional services to the village in the past, for example, bridge and cover repair, as well as previous stormwater involved in projects. And so before you is Resolution, let me get this, Resolution 2018-17, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Smith Construction for the 2018 Stormwater Rehabilitation Program.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-17, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the 2018 Stormwater Program. Are there any questions or comments?
Scott, I have a question, and it's regarding the installation of the 12-inch stormwater pipe and two catch basins on Beach Hollow. And my question arises because I believe 7027 is right across the street from me, and I'm sure I will be asked what's happening. So can you just describe what that is going to entail? And does the hyphen mean that it's going to affect every address in between? Or is it two catch basins in front of these two addresses?
Well, the issue that we experienced there is that there's a flow of water that comes, I'm going to say, I'm not going to say my direction because I'm not certain which direction it is, but towards the, from the-
I know where it goes.
Okay, so it flows towards the-
And it's ugly water.
Yes. And so it's creating some freezing issues in the winter for us there. And I believe there is an existing catch basin, so this is going to correct that situation. And both of those addresses will be affected by this particular work. So they're going to be installing-
Okay.
-an additional pipe as well as a, two new catch basins.
And how long does that take? Do they do that in a day?
It'd be longer than a day. It'll probably be a week project.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions related to this resolution? Not. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And I assume that concludes that. Okay, we'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Thank you. The Police Fire Committee met on July 30th to discuss, once again, for to be, actually to receive an update regarding our 911 system. We have been, we have shared here before that the department has been looking at transferring 911 from here to the county for two major reasons. The first being that Cincinnati Bell is no longer supporting the equipment, and replacement equipment is prohibitively expensive. And second, because they've been analyzing the calls that are received, and 90 percent of them are coming from outside the village that need to be sent on somewhere else. And even the ones that come from the village very frequently are medical emergencies that are also then dispatched elsewhere. So this is something, this is a conversation we've been having for quite some time, and I have reported it here before. And I think the committee felt really good about the conversations to date to really understand the reasons the village will maintain a full-time, 24-hour, seven-day-a-week dispatch. People can always call in to the department and get service, you know, in a non-emergency, they have, the phone number will always be answered. And it also allows the dispatchers to be more available to the officers on the road rather than constantly picking up 911 calls that aren't from here. So the transition is going to take place during the fall, certainly by year-end. And there'll be, I mean, there'll be more communication to the village beyond this announcement. The other thing we talked about is the Smart 911, which is a county initiative to collect supplemental information from people so that they'll have it, kind of like our census, so that they'll have information when you call, they'll be able to know, like, how many kids you have, or if you have a dog, or those kinds of things. People can sign up for that now. It's not that relevant for us because of our 911, but later on, it will be part of the push communicating the new system. So that concludes my report.
It might be worthwhile to just point out, mention the 90 percent of the calls, the fact that that's evolved over time because of cell phones.
Yes, due to cellphone, frequency of cellphone usage, and this is a trend that has been growing over time. Anything else?
And the cell phones are just bouncing off, they are near the cell tower, which is in the village, but many of the calls will be in Redding or down on, across County or something like that. So it is something that has evolved over time. And as typical of our police force, they stayed on top of it and, you know, eventually recognized that something needed to change. And so, I didn't know if Lieutenant Bloom wanted to add anything?
I would just add a couple of things. One thing very important that, because it could be confusing to some people about us not being a 911 agency anymore. We're still a 911 agency, we're just not answering the 911 call here. So you could still call 911 for any emergency, and you will not even realize a difference because the person, the dispatcher on the other end is still going to answer 911, "Where is your emergency?" They may say, "911, Hamilton County Dispatch, where's your emergency?", instead of Amberly Village, but it's still going to be just as quick. Your medical emergencies are probably going to be just a little bit quicker because the life squads that service Amberly Village are actually dispatched by Hamilton County. So they're going to get that life squad started just a little bit earlier than it would if it was coming here. So I just think it's important that we definitely educate everybody. If you have a true emergency, still call 911. You're still going to get the exact same service that you've always got in the past. And just to reiterate a little bit on the cellphone service, the, we receive, the majority of our 911 calls actually come from I-71 auto accidents, I-75 auto accidents, Rose Lawn. We get very few 911 calls from the village as far as the enormous number of 911 calls that we actually get every month. So it's going to be able to allow our dispatchers to provide a better service to our residents that are calling on the regular emergency line, the non-emergency line, and to our officers on the roadway.
Are there any questions or comments from any of the council?
Do you think we need to send a notice out, or sort of put in a newsletter regarding this change in terms of, you know, what was it, how, you know, what residents should expect when this change occurs and how, you know, how they should prepare themselves?
I don't know what the specifics planned are, but that was addressed, that was mentioned in the meeting, that yes, because we don't want people to jump to the wrong conclusion or feel alarmed. Yes, agree. Scott, do you have anything?
There'll be a communicated plan of the executed orders. Again, passing some information in Ice Cream Social, continue to communicate as enough holes without fall. Plan is to have this passed, accomplish, type of acts, act accordingly, use the time to start that education process.
Any other questions or comments? And now we'll move on to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee.
Thank you. The Amberly Village is accepting applications for the newly-created Human Rights Commission. And as you will recall, on April 9th, council passed ordinance 2018-4, an ordinance to combat discrimination and for the guarantee of equality and inclusion. This ordinance establishes the creation of a Human Rights Commission, whose mission is to encourage and endeavor to bring about mutual understanding and respect among all persons, and to safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination. The commission will be comprised of five members, each serving staggered three-year terms, except for the initial appointments, which will be from one to three years each. We are seeking a balanced representation of our community reflecting the diversity of Amberly Village. If you are a person who believes that all persons should be treated equally without regard to religious practice, sexual or gender identification, gender, race, or disability, please consider applying for a position on the Human Rights Commission. You can find an application on the village website, amberlyvillage.org, and we will have them available at the Ice Cream Social on Sunday, which hopefully everybody comes to because it's the only one we have every year. And it's great. And so the deadline for submission is four o'clock on Friday, September 14th. You can also, you can send your applications to village manager Scott Larmour here at Village Hall. And if you have any questions, you can also email or call the village manager. And that concludes my report.
Can you tell us what's going to happen after the applications are received?
Well, we, well, we've got a timeline for the application, and in the committee, we discussed a, kind of a tentative timeline for conducting interviews. And then I believe by the November council meeting, we wanted to have the commission set in place. And also, I do want to report that for the initial five, the way it is structured is that council selects three, and the manager has one appointment, and the mayor has one appointment. But for the initial commission, in order to achieve the, you know, because we don't know what it's going to be made of, and we want it to be a diverse commission, that the manager and the mayor have both agreed to allow those two appointments to be full council appointments as well.
Okay. So are we going to have, like, a special council meeting, like we did when we appointed the council vacancy, where we have, conduct interviews? And is it intended to mirror that, or?
My understanding is that we were going to conduct interviews.
That was the intent.
Okay. I mean, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not challenging, I really-
No, that's what the application is, I mean, I sent the application via Scott, you know, through the method, so that we're not all conducting a meeting. But I mean, it's really, it's just two questions and-
Yeah, I read it, I read the application.
Yeah, very general, open-ended, and I mean, what can you, you know, possibly ask in an application for a commission like this? Probably best to have open interviews.
Okay, I was just curious how it was going to go.
Just one clarification, with respect to the manager's appointment and the mayor's appointment. They will still be in accordance with the ordinance. They will still be a manager's appointment and a mayor's appointment, but we will consider all five of them at the same time and come up with kind of our, you know, diverse group of five.
Right.
But we have to have this in accordance with that.
My question is this, is there provision in the ordinance for the removal of a member for any particular reason?
There, no, there's not a specific, well, they're, not for removal, but if you're not a resident of a village, or if you lose, leave the village, then you cannot be on the commission.
That's understandable.
That's stipulated, but there's not a specific, when we discussed this at the meeting, there's not a specific incidence that will get you removed from the commission. I mean, you are expected to act in good faith, the same as we as council members act in good faith as well.
So there would not be a hearing process or anything like that, as current state? I know it's sort of jumping the gun, but it's something to do, I think should be considered, should find people who are not acting in the best interest of the commission.
Yeah, I mean, that really sort of is jumping the gun, because we've already passed the ordinance and-
Yeah, I mean, we've got the ordinance, I understand that, but, you know, you still could have some individual who could be- Well, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, that was specifically discussed. And, you know, I think the feeling was, the expectation is that the Human Rights Commission will kind of establish their own kind of rules as to how they're going to kind of operate. And I think the expectation is that those five members, over time, may develop some proposals as far as rules, but allow them to get started and understand how it's going to operate. And if in fact, they find that they need to have something like that, and it requires us to amend the ordinance, then they can propose something to us to amend the ordinance, and we can work through that process.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking out loud, having a removal process right at the get-go in a Human Rights Commission sort of adds a political element that I think we don't want to have there right from the start. Because we don't want, we don't want the commissioners to be thinking, "Well, am I going to get removed if I decide one way or the other way?"
There might be a issue. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think that's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know what, Ray reminded me, I think there might be something in the ordinance about absenteeism as well.
Will you be posting, sorry, will you be posting this on Facebook so we can share it around and?
And does that conclude the?
Yeah.
Okay. We will now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point out a couple of items in the managers' report. The 2018 road program is underway. There's some preparatory work that is currently being done. It will embark next week, but there's some work that's currently being done. Just as a reminder to residents, the streets that are included in this year's program are Matson Avenue, Gwynn-Gwin Drive, Lansdowne, Gardner, and then a portion of Sagamore. So it'd be the cul-de-sac area of Sagamore Drive. And then in addition to that, there's some curb work that's being done on Elbuck this year. In total, it's over a half a million dollar project for the village to reinvest in our infrastructure. So most of that work will be occurring in the, over the next month. Expect the work to be done by the 21st of September, and that is weather permitting. Next item I wanted to highlight is in regards to the gas aggregation. Village Council a few months ago entered into, authorized an agreement to enter into a, an agreement with IGS to continue our gas aggregation program. Residents will be receiving an opt-out letter within the next two weeks. This gives residents the opportunity to opt out of the program if they are not interested in participating in the gas aggregation program. Once that process unfolds, then Duke gives notification, asking you once again if you want to be opted, opt out of the program. And then, once we pass that hurdle, then the program will be enacted in probably the first billing, meter reading in October of this year. So that program is well underway, and will continue saving residents money in regards to your gas. I did want to take the opportunity to recognize a staff member who has been awarded the professional accreditation of Certified Public Finance Administrator. This is Kathy Hartford. She is our finance administrator for the village, and she's been designated this recognition by the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada. So this is an organization that intend, the purpose is to elevate the knowledge of public finance and sort of enrich that performance within the treasury management functions. And so Kathy's been pursuing this for a while, so we're quite pleased that she has obtained this. And then the last, last item are two grants that the village has received. The Police and Fire Department have been active in the grant solicitation. So the grant that I want to talk about first is through the Bureau of Workers' Comp. This is a grant in the amount of little over $10,000. And it was applied for to obtain a washer, extractor, and fire gloves and hood for the village. So the village will be receiving over $10,000 for this, these items. Our match on this portion of the grant is just a little over $2,000. It's a pretty good return on our, on our investment there. The next grant that we are recipients of is from FEMA. So this is an exhaust system for the firehouse. And Finance Committee has been seeing this on the, on the capital budget for quite a few years. We typically, it's asked for, and we hold off because we felt we would always be successful with a budget item. And 2018 was our year to come through with FEMA. So FEMA has awarded us a grant in the amount of little over $45,000, and our contribution to that will be about $2,200. So it's a pretty, a pretty great grant to receive from FEMA. So hats off to our Police and Fire Department. And Sandy Pywin, who pursues our grants for us, because part of this actually did pay for her stipend that she received on a monthly basis. So we're quite pleased with that. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay, we'll now move on to, I just want to give Lieutenant Bloom a moment, it's not on the agenda, but to comment on the Ice Cream Social, which is this coming Sunday. The staff here at the Village Hall have really been working very diligently to create a fun day for all residents, young, median age, old. It's supposedly going to be a great day for everyone, so just to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, that's correct. It is going to be this Sunday, August 19th. The time change is a little different, usually it's a little more in the evening. This Ice Cream Social is going to be 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're praying for good weather. It is going to be quite a spectacular event, we hope. It's going to be larger than it has been, with much more activities for all ages. We're still going to have the displays and stuff, but we're going to have some more interactive things for the kids to do. We also are going to have some other food items and snack items along with the ice cream. And a lot of this is going to be, is because we've had a good number of donations from residents of the village, some council members, some businesses in the village. So we had some good funds to work with to provide, just hopefully, an outstanding Ice Cream Social for the village and all the residents. So we encourage everybody to come out and see us Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00.
Okay, we'll now move on to the mayor's report, and I just have a couple of items. First, in your package is a resolution which I talked about at the last meeting. This is a resolution which advocates for changes in the process for granting permits on, for high-pressure pipelines. This is something the council and a number of communities have been dealing with over the last few years. It's been in the press a lot with respect to the proposal from Duke Energy. The, we've talked, the status of that proposal is still kind of in limbo. But, you know, one of the key items that we found as we went through the process is that as far as the criteria that the Ohio Power Siting Board considers when they get an application, safety is not one of the criteria. And I think everyone was a little bit taken aback by that. And so I know the city of Cincinnati, I know the village of Gulf Manor have passed resolutions. And the purpose of these resolutions is to advocate to our state legislature to consider amending the criteria, so that safety is something that they consider in the siting process. So before you tonight is Resolution 2018-18, which would, which advocates for changes in the process. And this resolution, similar to the ones that we had passed before, would be sent to all members of the Ohio Legislature on both the Senate and the House side. So I hereby move that we adopt Resolution 2018-18. Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-18, which advocates for changes in the process for granting permits for high-pressure pipelines. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for running with this. You've been just a great advocate on the pipeline for us and keeping us really at the forefront of communities who are commenting on this, as the mayor mentioned, said a lot of what I was going to say. But this started in Cincinnati with the Cincinnati City Council, and then Gulf Manor did it immediately. We will be, I think, the third to pass. Evendale and Redding are right behind us. And I think the original goal in Cincinnati was that this would be many, many, many communities all over the state. And the timing of this, the main question, just to kind of reiterate something that the mayor said, there's not, there were a lot of questions like, "Oh, my God, did I miss something? Are they, are they back? Are they doing something? Are they changing something?" This is a proactive piece of legislation, not a reactive one. Nothing's happened, nothing's changed in terms of the last update that we, that we have officially about the pipeline. This is a, this is a proactive moment, and really, both because I think of all the frustration that the mayor highlighted in terms of people just thinking, feeling very helpless about the fact that this is a, that safety is not being taken into account in this process, and feeling very helpless about that. In addition, I think there's, may also mention, there's, there was, there's precedent for this in other places, where zoning can be, is used in other state law, where states have created setback limitations in addition to just safety criteria. So it's kind of looking at both of those things, and really advocating to the state that as the natural gas industry continues to expand, that it's time for them to look at regulations. So on timing, again, to just reiterate to everybody, there's nothing, there's nothing, this is not reacting specifically to anything new, but that part of the impetus for the timing is trying to kind of gather the, at least from the city, to get, the city of Cincinnati, to gather a lot of communities together in adv- to gather a lot of communities together in advance of the new legislature, legislature and governor taking, being seated in the, in the winter. So we will have a new governor who will be appointing a new Power Siting Board and PCO. That is going to happen regardless of how the election in November happens, there will be a new governor. So trying to get out a little bit in front of this is, is kind of the, the impetus for the timing. But again, thank you, and this has obviously been very important to our residents, and I'm very, looking forward to being on record for this.
Other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. In addition, Councilwoman Kaymine pointed out another possible resolution that we might want to consider in the future, and I will be drafting a resolution. It has been in the press, I think, pretty much over the last couple of weeks, that the State of Ohio is expecting a budget surplus. The size of that budget surplus is higher than, it will result in needing to do something because under the state law, they cannot have a quote-unquote rainy day fund in excess of, I think, $2 billion. Because of the surplus, they will be taking their rainy, rainy day fund in excess of, it would go in excess of the $2 billion, so they have to spend the money on something. They are considering different things, but, but because local communities were subject to substantial cutbacks just seven, eight years ago, I think many communities, communities want to advocate to the state that they consider reinstating some of the funds that they took away. So I will be looking to put, to put together that resolution. But I think it's equally important for council members, residents, to contact your, your representatives. I'm fairly certain that our local representative, Bridget Kelly, and our Senator Cecil Thomas are supportive of what we want, but still, reaching out to people is always important.
Should we call the Governor's Office, too?
Sure.
I feel strongly about this. I think we should get everyone calling.
So I, I will be putting that together, and related to the next item on that, given the fact that our next council meeting, and I want to now put everyone on notice, our next council meeting is not, is on a different schedule. It is the 6th of September. So September 6th, it will not be the second Monday in September. We had to move the council meeting because of Jewish holy days in September. So please make sure that you note on your calendar that the next council meeting will be the 6th, 6th of September, and I will have something, a resolution for that, at that meeting. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the Environmental Stewardship Committee. Its next meeting is September 24th at 7:00, down in the greeting room. They, they will be resuming Clean the Green in September, and that's scheduled for September 20th. And I think one of the key focus items for the Environmental Stewardship Committee over the remainder of 2018, as well as at the Ice Cream Social, is they, you know, want to try to reach out to residents to get involved. And I think between the Environmental Stewardship Committee and the Human Rights Commission, there's some great opportunities for residents to get involved. And in the case of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, you don't have to become a member of the committee, it's just you can, there's a lot of activities, be it Clean the Green, be it One Stop Drop that we hold in, in April, for people to get involved. And it's a great way to get involved in, you know, the community, and, and see if you want to get involved even more. So we will be trying to reach out, and we're going to write an article for the print newsletter in October and so forth. So really, we want to breathe some new life into the committee, because that, that is needed. And that concludes my Mayor's Report. Are there any questions or comments?
I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot on this, but I noticed that our, the presentation from our Land Development Committee was, and I, I thought it was amazing, and I just wanted to know if you wanted to share anything about the, the information, or if, or a way to, you know, distribute it to, to our residents?
Yeah, we did, we had a Land Development Committee meeting, it was a week ago today, where the Melissa Johnson, who is the Development Director for the Redevelopment Authority, or the, the former Port Authority, who is the owner of 2100 Section Row, the former Gibson property, made a very, an excellent presentation, kind of to update the committee on what's been going on down at the former Gibson property. Basically, in summary, the property is now completely ready for development. The, all the stormwater work has been completed, the stormwater is working as intended. The retention pond is, is doing exactly what it was intended to do. They continue to get interest in the property, there's nothing really hot as far as any of that interest, but they remain confident that this is something that will occur. It is by far the largest site inside the 275 Loop available for redevelopment, anywhere in, you know, in any community. And we are fortunate, as we said from the beginning, to have the Redevelopment Authority, the Port Authority, working with us, as opposed to some private enterprise, because they really are working proactively with us to identify the right party for that, that particular property. We will be, we do want to put something together for residents to communicate that. I think it, you know, we, we have been trying to hold kind of town hall-type meetings, and so I think probably the most likely thing is we will try to have something in October or November to reach out to people and let them know that, that this is going on, and maybe even have Melissa, again, do that, because Melissa was very good in that presentation. There were some slides available, and those are a public document now, so to the extent residents would like to see those, those are available to our residents. And I think we could probably put them out on the website, and allow people to reach out and see those slides on the website.
Yep, I think that's great.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will now move on to new business.
One item. In my capacity, as our community rep to the local school decision-making committee at PRM Pleasant Ridge Montessori, our neighborhood school, I just wanted to report that interim principal has been appointed. I shared last month that Jenny Malk had moved on to a district-level post in leadership development. And a woman named Melissa Ridley has been appointed as the interim principal. She has over 20 years' experience as a Montessori educator. She is newer to administration. She has been, she was at Dater Montessori as an assistant principal for just one year. The assistant principal had retired as well, and the new assistant principal is a man named Kevin Jump, who is actually a retiree of Society Public, but has been brought back to sort of fill in a different, in different capacities. He has a lot of administrative experience at elementary schools and high schools. And I mean, he, he's a permanent appointment, but he sees his, I mean, we, we had a little meeting earlier this week, or last week. He sees his role as helping her, you know, get up to speed administratively, but she's very lovely and very warm, and I think, I mean, any change in administration is difficult, like bumpy up in it, certainly, but I think she's really, it'll be good. So that concludes my report.
Okay, questions?
PRM is going to have a table at the Ice Cream Social, too, I think.
Any questions related to that? Other item?
I'm just, without taking away, of course, from the Ice Cream Social, which is the highlight event of the month, but it's just been a month of events, and just wanted to, you know, say thank you and congratulations to Adif Israel on their amazing event last week, and to also remind people the signs are up right, kind of next to the Ice Cream Social signs. The JCC is having the farmer, their farmer's market, you know, annual event on August 26th, from 9:30 to 12:00. And of course, that's open to everybody. It's, oh, 12:30, till 1:00, till 1:00, yeah, I think you're right. Open to the public. It's not, it's not limited to members of the JCC, it's open to the whole community, and it's, it's a farmer's market, so it's great.
I, since it's summertime and people are walking their dogs in Amberly Green, I think it's a good time to remind people that the rule is to control your dogs. And I actually received two separate phone calls from residents this month who do not know each other at all, both of them complaining about dogs running after them, and then one person actually said he was bit by a dog. So, control your dog. I, I don't want to ruin Amberly Green for dog lovers, myself included, who takes the leash off my old dogs, and, and I control them. But you have to know the dogs that you are visiting the park with, or park with, and, for example, in one case, the case of the dog that bit the resident, it was being walked by someone who was not the dog's owner. So if you don't own the dog, you probably don't know the dog 100%, and that dog should probably be on a leash, because probably by definition, you can't control a dog that you don't own. So please, I think.
Did you tell them, did you tell them to report it to the police?
They, I, he did not, I don't know if he reported it to the police, he also doesn't want to ruin, you know, the fund for everybody either. But I think we do need to educate people about the rule is control your dog, it's not a free-for-all dog park, and even if it was, there are rules in dog parks, too. And that's my new business. Thank you.
Got it. Did you want to comment at all on this? Because I think this is something that we are going to be taking up in public, public buildings and parks.
We've actually begun some research on the dogs under control, what that means, also thinking in terms of how to communicate that to residents, but also to folks that would be at Amberly Green, what's the appropriate way to get that information out, whether it's pamphlets or something, a sign of some sort. So we're working on pulling those things together. First of all, we need to identify what that looks like, and then we'll be communicating that.
Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.